The Planning Commission meeting for April 10, 2025 to order. Please rise for the President's Legions.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
All the updates were published yesterday.
Thank you. Ms. Schenk, is there anything from the county attorney's office?
No changes.
All right, Mr. Ziegler, if you'd like to stand, please raise your right hand. All right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida, that you are qualified to hold office under the Constitution of the state, and that you will well and faithfully perform at all times the duties of the Planning Commission on which you are now about to enter? Yes, thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next is approval of minutes for January 16th, February 13th, March 13th, March 27th. Any discussions or corrections? If not, I entertain a motion. First motion is by Matt Bauer, second is by Ms. Gay. Please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Let's move on to citizen comments. This is in consideration for future agenda items that are not on today's agenda. Each person will be limited to three minutes.
I live in Manatee County since 1978. Stella Burnett. Stella Burnett. Since 1978. I've lived in the same basic neighborhood, only one time I lived in the city, and I didn't like that. Stormwater. We need to talk about stormwater, flooding. I have flood insurance on my house. I'm not in a flood zone. It's stormwater because a builder was allowed to build inappropriately and not raise the land. The house is high enough. I'm an island when it rains. I'm four feet around my house, four feet. Luckily, I have not flooded. I own a duplex on 20th Street Court East. Two duplexes next to it flooded. It was a no-name storm. Johnson Bruce owns one of them next to me. He started digging a ditch on my property. I stopped him because the tenant called me. He dug it on his property, went through county property to drain the water off of his property. I say this because you need to go out and look at these things, go out and look at the property that the people are saying, "I want this, I want that." You need to go look. We need green space. We need parking. I have one duplex I can see from my house that has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven vehicles, and somebody rides to work with somebody that lives there that parks in the street. My daughter up the street had an illegal, had a car parked in her yard, all the way in her yard, with expired tags, and she had it towed because somebody parked in her yard to ride to work with somebody else. It's just, you need to look at parking and stormwater. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, I'd like to close citizen comments and move to presentation number one.
Item number one, ordinance number 25-17, PA 2502, a county-initiated comprehensive plan text amendment, repeal of ordinance 21-12, PLN, and the PLN is 25010167, and we have Elizabeth Schulman here for staff.
Good morning. Hi. So my name is Elizabeth Schulman. I'm a senior planner here with the county, and I'm here to talk to you about the repeal of ordinance 2112.
Excuse me. Can you state a little background? I don't think we have your resume in the record.
Okay. I am, I started with the county in September. I have my master's in city and regional planning, and I've been working in public service for over 10 years. Okay? So I'm here to talk to you about the repeal of ordinance 2112, the removal of policy 2128, and this is a county-initiated comprehensive plan text amendment, and this is ordinance 2517. Okay, so this pertains to the FDAB. So the future development area boundary, which is pictured here, is the graphic extent of new development in Manatee County, with development occurring to the west and agriculture to the east. And so you can see here, you can see here a very different land use pattern to the west than you do to the east of the FDAB. Okay, so what I'm going to talk about is I'm going to explain ordinance 2112, policy 2128. I'm going to talk about what happened. I'm going to talk about the repeal, the history of development boundaries, the regulatory framework, and then I'm going to go over our FDAB and why it's important, and then I'm going to talk about the proposed changes and the next steps. So ordinance 2112, it was called the Northeast Expansion Text Amendment. This was a privately-initiated text amendment as opposed to a county-initiated one, like the one today. It was adopted on November 18, 2021, and this ordinance implemented policy 2128, which allowed development to occur east of the FDAB and encroach on designated agricultural land, and policy 2128 will be removed as a result of this text amendment. So what did policy 2128 do? What it, what it did was allow development to occur in an area that is coterminous and contiguous to the FDAB. So if it, so initially, if it touched the FDAB, that is where you could begin your development, but then it went on to say, "Or to lands that have been approved pursuant to 2128," and this is really important because this means that it creates a domino effect. It doesn't just have to touch the FDAB anymore. Now it just gets to touch lands that have, a development that has been approved pursuant to 2128. So it creates a, so it creates this continuous development that gets to move each, east as each project gets approved, and this completely undermines the FDAB. So now that's your new. So the implementation mechanism for 2128 was a comprehensive land use map amendment to a change of a future land use category of urban fringe three. So it was going from agriculture, which is .2 dwelling units per acre, to UF3, which is three dwelling units per acre, and that's a 1,400% increase in density. So where before you could have one dwelling unit, now you can have 15 dwelling units. And the results of this policy were that a number of residential projects were approved, including what you have pictured here. In red is Taylor Ranch with 4,500 dwelling units and East River Ranch with 5,378 dwelling units, and you can see all the projects that have been approved or partially approved as a result of policy 2128. So the motion to repeal ordinance 2112 occurred on January 28, 2025, in a regular Board of County Commissioners meeting. They motioned to remove policy 2128, and in the current proposed ordinance, ordinance 2517, we're going to remove policy 2128, and no new language is being added. So development boundaries. Development boundaries are designated areas for development for residential and commercial, and areas for agriculture and preservation. It has its origins in early 20th century United Kingdom. 1958 Lexington, Kentucky, is the first in the United States to implement one of these, and they implemented it to protect surrounding horse farms. Miami Dade, which is pictured here, is the first county in Florida to adopt a development boundary, and Florida coastal counties in particular face challenges due to high development demand and natural barriers. So the 1985 Florida Growth Management Act required each county to adopt a local comprehensive plan, and the plan must guide and control development, address concerns related to development, include future land use maps, like the, this is the future land use map for our county, and each, each of these maps will show the distribution, location, and extent of the categories of land use. And you can see east of the FDAB that agriculture and conservation are the primary designations. You can see where it became UF3 because of the projects I spoke about, and you can see the shading, which is our watershed for Lake Manatee. And you can see a lot of the conservation is within that watershed. So the future development area boundary was adopted in 1989 as a part of our first comprehensive plan. It changed slightly in 2006, and again, a slight adjustment in 2010. It's our geographic extent for new development. As I said, lands east are intended for agriculture, and it's characterized by five-acre minimum lots, which is that .2 dwelling units per acre. So this is overview. I'm going to get into each of these. The future development area boundary is meant to control urban sprawl, encourage denser development to the west, provide public facilities and services in a cost-efficient manner, and protect agricultural lands and natural resources. So urban sprawl is a development pattern characterized by low-density residential housing, car-dependent transportation, single-use zoning, so not mixed-use, increases in impervious surfaces, which lead to flooding, and increases in infrastructure costs such as roads, sewers, and waters as you have to extend it out. The utility service area is the exact same boundary as the FDAB line. When they drew the FDAB line, they were matching the utility service area, and this is the area in the county that provides potable water and wastewater. This concentrates growth in areas where infrastructure exists, which ensures efficient and fiscally responsible use of public resources. It is the responsibility of the county to reduce the taxpayer burden, and public utilities are not intended to go past the FDAB. That was, that was never the intention. East of the FDAB is meant to use septic and well water. The transportation network east of the FDAB does not have capacity to support higher-intensity developments. Higher-intensity development would deteriorate level of service, add congestion and delays, and create a higher risk of crashes, not only in East County, but it's a network, all of us West County as well, and it would discourage infill development, which would result in a lack of, you know, transit and multimodal as you get that infill to the west. Agriculture. Agriculture, as I mentioned before, is the big reason that counties choose to put these boundaries in place. It's a major economic asset, half a billion dollars of annual impact, second only to tourism in Manatee County. It's a big part of our heritage, spanning roughly 150 years, and it supports a rural quality of life. 88% of the farms in Manatee County are family farms, and it's just incredibly important because agriculture provides food. So we have 220,000 acres of farmland. Top crops are vegetables and citrus. Top livestock is cattle. And I just wanted to highlight in our comprehensive plan all of the areas where it speaks to preserving agriculture as the primary land use east of the FDAB, protecting agriculture as a major economic asset, and to limit the degree of suburbanization which may displace agriculture. And this is also well-backed up in Florida statute. Natural resources. So East County is home to a range of biodiversity hotspots, which are critical habitats for wildlife and endangered species. It contains our watershed and groundwater recharge areas. Lake Manatee is a critical reservoir, provides over 39 million gallons of water per day to over 300,000 residents of Manatee County and parts of Sarasota County. And we have a list of outstanding Florida waters that are east of the FDAB, and I just wanted to point out, that's a picture of Lake Manatee, that clean water resources are far easier to protect than they are to treat once you pollute them. So what we're doing here, the proposed changes to the, to the text amendment, in element two, we're going to be removing references to 2128. We're going to strike out policy 2128, and then in the other objectives, we're just removing references to it. Same with element nine, all we're doing is removing references to policy 2128. And so I just wanted to show policy 2122. You can see number six, where policy, the reference to policy 2128 is struck out, but it does show that you still can have development east of the FDAB for things like farm worker housing, residential within Maiaaca, and that kind of thing. We're not changing any of that. All we're doing is striking out 2128. And the next steps are to go to the county for transmittal and adoption, and in conclusion, the requests can be found to be consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan and Florida state statutes to preserve agricultural lands and limit urban sprawl. Thank you.
Is there any questions for staff?
Thank you so much for your presentation. A couple of questions. Will this in any way negatively affect individuals' personal property rights when, for instance, say they choose to not come out of, or to come out of family farming or things like that, or want to do any other kind of ADUs or things like that on their own personal property?
Oh, no, it's, it's not touching anything like that.
Great. And then do we do anything, and this may be an overstep question, and if it is, I apologize, but do we do anything within the county building department to encourage and work with those who are east of the FDAB currently on getting conservation easements and things like that, so that it makes it easier for them to continue this agricultural use with their family farms?
I believe we do. I don't know if Kara wants to.
Good morning. Carricketing with staff. So yes, but it's voluntary, so if they're interested in putting conservation easement over their property, they'd work with our property acquisition department and provide that conservation easement to the county, but it's at the will of the property owner.
Okay, and does that work in conjunction with some of the conservation easements within the state and things like that? Or is it strictly with?
So if it's a private property owner, it depends on what they want to do with it, right? So if they do want to do it to the county, we have our environmental lands acquisition committee that looks at properties that would be good for preservation. So if that's the route they want to take too, that's something that can be done, but it really just depends on the interest of the property owner.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I just, I'm so glad to see this come. I know when it was approved, and it was supposed to be an exception, and then all of a sudden, every agenda had applications east of the FDAB, and it just never met the policies or goals of the comprehensive plan, so I'm definitely going to vote for this. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's open this up to public comment. Let's call it as public comment, I guess. Any addition?
The chair, there's also opportunity for call-ins.
Okay. Is there any?
No callers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Any additional comments or clarifications? At this time, let's entertain a vote or a motion. First by Ms. Gay, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. And please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. Nope, no, five to one. Mr. Essinger.
Five to one.
You voted against it?
Yes.
Any reason or comments?
I don't, you know, I've given this a lot of thought, and the way I look at this is that, and the way I comprehend this is that you're taking away future rights of property. And I think what needs to be, what need, the conversation that needs to be had is a serious conversation in planning for future development. I mean, not development, but planning for future growth with our infrastructure and preparing for that, because it's simple. You know, Manatee County is a destination people are going to continue to come, so I think that the conversation needs to be generated to plan for this growth. And I don't, and the way I look at this is you're more or less shutting it down. Well, I don't think that's the right way to go. I think that we need to continue to plan for future growth, but we also need to have a serious conversation about our infrastructure and being able to plan for that growth. So at this time, I just am not agreeable to that.
I think that can still happen, and I think through the comprehensive planning process, you know, the F dab may move. It's already moved in its history, and that can happen again. And I think planning for that is fine, but I think at this time, it meets the policies of the plan, and it is where it is. And, you know, I don't think that restricts it from changing down the road and planning for that.
I would echo what Ms. Kaba said. I think too, if we're talking about planning and budgeting and things like that for infrastructure in the future, it's hard to say, let's keep this open and continue to stretch our resources when we're clearly having issues west of the F dab with that infrastructure. Let's take that time, effort, and those monetary resources and focus it where it's most needed. And then when, you know, we go through the comprehensive plan process and all of that, if the F dab then can move, and we can feasibly continue to do that and be wise stewards of taxpayer dollars, then I think that that's a great opportunity to do that then.
Thank you. And the motion passes five to one. At this time, let's do the swearing-in. If you plan on speaking the rest of the meeting, please stand to be sworn in.
Will sir affirm the contractual statements of the presentations you will present? The information are truthful and accurate?
I do.
Thank you. These are presentations upon request. Please read Number 2 in, please.
Item Number 2, Z2421 Romero Townhomes, and this is quasi-judicial. And we have CJ Mills here for staff. It's a rezone of approximately 2.16 acres from RMF 6 to RMF 9 zoning district, generally located approximately .5 miles north of State Road 70, between 15th Street East and US 301, on the north side of 49th Avenue East, and extending approximately 570 feet west of 20th Street Court East. And the president doesn't have an address on 18th Street East.
Thank you. Has there been any expedite communications on this? Can we have a brief introduction from the applicant?
Good morning, Board. My name is Richard Claybrook, and I'm with Claybrook Engineering, and I'm a citizen of Manatee County. The, yes ma'am, just now. The request is fairly simple. This area is currently an RMF 6, which would allow for 13 units on the property. The property is positioned between existing zoning that allows for duplexes at about that rate to the south, and light manufacturing to our north. So we're kind of an in-between area. The future land use is RES 9, so all that we're asking is that we move the zoning up in compliance with that RES 9, since we're in that kind of in-between zone to go from a RMF 6 to an RMF 9.
Is there any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Let's open this up to public comment, see if there's anybody in the public.
So Stella Burnett, and yes, I've been sworn, Manatee County, 1819, 49th Avenue Drive East. Apparently, I'm within 500 feet of this because I got the letter. I talked to CJ, I asked him to look at pictures. He told me he would not be out in the area. That corner floods. It floods. And I hope you guys will not looked at it, but it's so small, I doubt if you would. The picture that I was sent does not have the retention pond from the industrial park there. To me, I live there, I'm a Burnett, with Burnett's Nursery. I worked my ex-husband after we divorced. It floods. We had a severe flood and a no-name storm. Water was probably within two inches of the top of our plants. We lost many plants, so it floods even with all that's there. I wanted to go to the meeting when Michael rezoned to this, what he had, but my son asked me not to because it's family. But again, I live in the area, my son lives in Texas, so I listen to him, I don't know why. Anyway, green space, parking. I know I'm jumping ahead of the game, but this is a very, very small, skinny piece of property that has a retention pond in the back. It has a tiny, possibly eight-foot road in the front. The road was never widened. It curves around, and that's where it floods. So I visualize kids walking home from school through the mud, through the water, to get to their quote "home." I was told 12 units, now you're saying 13. When I did 12, I'm thinking 48 people versus 19, it would be 76 people. How many more cars? How many more kids? Onika went from an A school, when my kids were there, to an F school, and had to go an extra hour of reading because they couldn't pass the test, they couldn't read because their parents couldn't read. So this has been my neighborhood. I went from an A school to an F school. I can name you the undocumented people that live in my neighborhood. The place that I told you about, the 1, 2, 3, 4 vans, 2 SUVs and a small pickup truck, admitted they're undocumented, they want no trouble, no loud music, no trouble. We have 92 units, or 94 units, that were approved on 51st, at the corner of, I'm thinking, 18th, 19th Street, a big piece of land that was approved by the Mexican marketplace. That's been approved. We have 800 units right next to Woodlands that has been approved. I mean, do we really need this? I was going to put duplexes on it, right back at what was there. Let it be like what was there. There's duplexes there, put duplexes back, and everybody's happy. Anyway, I'm adamantly against it, and this is a practice for my county commission speech. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else from the public?
My name is Jerry Young. I live on 49, what is it, 49 1918 Street. What she's saying is kind of correct. There's very poor, I'm sorry.
And you have been sworn in?
Yes, sir, I still have, yes, sir. There's very, it does flood that area because I walk around, but there's also very poor lighting in that area, and it's very congested. So my concern would be traffic and parking would be the issue. Also, lately, there's been more speeding in the area, which is, there's one road, it's 18th, that's the longest in that neighborhood, it leads directly to the nursery, and for some reason, people like to speed down that road, which happens to be the road that I live on. As you come around the corner to get onto 18th, you're actually turning into a totally blind spot. You can't see anybody when you're making that right-hand turn to go north on 18th, in the direction of where the development's going to be. So my concern would be, how do they adjust for foot traffic and parking? So I'd actually be against it, but thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public? At this time, let's close public comment and have staff come up, please.
Good morning, CJ Mills with staff, and I've been sworn. Do you want the presentation, or do you want me to maybe touch on a couple of the things that Ms. Burnett had to say?
Yeah, I believe that, what would be the next steps to this property on site permitting and stuff like that?
Yeah, so, well, right now, we're just looking at the straight rezone from RMF 6 to RMF 9. The max density, I think, is actually only 12 right now on the 2.16 acres, and whenever you go to the RMF 9, you'd be able to get a maximum density of 19, which is about 34, 35 parking spaces. That would be, if you did the full 19, 1.8 per dwelling unit. I do, I was not able to go visit the site myself, but I did have a member of our code enhancement go out there and take some pictures, which I do have here, let's see. That's just showing it's about 150 feet from that light manufacturing to the north. So these are the pictures on there. It is a flood-prone area. Lately, we have not been getting a ton of rain, so unfortunately, whenever the employee went out there to take some of these photos, you can see it's pretty dry. They can only, they're not allowed to enter the property without permission, so he can only take photos from the road showing you the property and basically getting up to the fence line. So those are the photos that he took. Again, you know, and the staff report does say it's a flood-prone area. I've not personally been out there, so I'm just trying to, you know, present the facts to you all.
Yes, sir. What would be the next steps if approved or not approved on this?
The next step would be final site plan, and that would be an administrative review that would come in, and you'd have your final site plan, construction plans, and all of that.
And at that time, they would deal with the flooding and the traffic and everything else, studies-wise?
Yeah, the traffic, the parking, stormwater would all have to be in compliance with our LDC.
Is there any questions for staff? Yes, sir.
What's making this area so prone to flooding?
I think that, I'm not 100% sure on that, why it floods. I think it might be a bit lower, and then there could be, it's an older area, so there might not be really improved stormwater like we have today, when all of this was mainly constructed. Unfortunately, I'm not a stormwater engineer, so I don't know if I'd be able to answer that question to the best as Ms. Denise Greer could.
Denise Greer for staff, and I have been sworn. Sorry, I didn't get my digital ready this morning, but I do have my paper copies. So here is the, I'll show you the Bowley's Creek floodplain. Okay, you can see that here. So the yellow is where we have mapped the floodplain, but I'm sure that during certain rain events, maybe the roads do flood, and just like CJ did say, he was exactly right, that a lot of this area was built before our current codes without stormwater detention or retention areas. So that's why probably some of this area has been experiencing some of that. But it is not, this is the FEMA map, and it is not in the 1% flood hazard area, but you will see that we have had some areas mapped with the Bowley's Creek floodplain. So we have had some discussions with the engineers, there's been a couple on this site, actually, this is the first time we've seen it, that stormwater will be required, stormwater permitting, like we do today on all current permits will have to be done. And we also have discussed 49th Avenue East and 20th Street Court East with them in previous applications, that parts of those roads will have to be brought up to standard, especially going around that corner there. It's kind of tight, so we have had those discussions.
The road improvements, is that on the county, or is that on the developer?
No, that will be on the developer.
Okay. And I'm seeing basically some sort of stormwater pond to the north, is that accurate?
That's for the industrial use, yes.
Okay.
Part of that may be a ditch system, but they also have some stormwater facilities.
From a stormwater engineering, does it make sense to gear the water runoff towards the north versus the south?
Well, I don't know if their engineer has looked at that, and maybe we could have him come back up to speak to that, but you have to maintain the runoff direction that you have in your existing condition. So if it doesn't go south now, and it goes north, then they will have to direct it north, or to the outfall that they have now.
Okay. And this property is only, you said, 250 feet wide? Is that, it's not a very large piece of land, is what I'm getting at, correct?
So if, we can pull the presentation back up out of the boundary survey. There we go, let's see here. And here. So.
It's approximately 165.
Yeah. This is approximately 165 feet wide.
And you can see, hopefully you can see there at the top, there's a, there is a drainage easement on the property. There's a 75-foot-wide drainage easement for that ditch or stormwater system that's there. So they will have to take that into account when they develop.
So staff is, find it significant or insignificant in terms of what this property will do in terms of adding to any particular flooding?
We haven't seen the calculations yet for them to prove that, but it's a relatively small project, yes.
And that's part of something they have to do before they can do anything, even upon approval, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for staff? I guess could we have applicant back up, please? I know this is just a zoning change right now, but any ideas on flooding and traffic as of today?
Actually, you know, a development is coming onto this property. It is a small property, is a very small development. You know, whether we look at 12 or 13 units of duplex, or whether we look at 18 units of a mix of duplex and quadruplex, that type of thing, is fairly irrelevant. I mean, we have to comply with the conditions of the LDC. We have to, you know, maintain the flood and the drainage issues that are out there. We have to compensate for those. All that comes into the standard practice and design of what's going on here. You know, to condemn the property, or to say we can't do anything on that property because there's a little bit of flooding in the road is a little bit short-sighted, especially when the majority of developments that go in like this do, in fact, they either do not impact it, or they improve that situation slightly. So I would just like to reframe again, all we're asking is to increase from the RMF 6 to the RMF 9, to get a few more units in there. We are not saying that we're not going to develop that property for the people in the public that think that. public that think that this might be an open-shut case and it's not going to happen, but it is going to happen. So, thank you.
Any additional questions for applicant, Ms. Gay?
Is there any plan for this to be affordable housing?
No, ma'am, there is not. We had spoken to the owner about affordable housing, and at this time, he was not interested in doing affordable housing. He was interested in doing a duplex townhome-type development of, you know, attached, single-family homes, so.
Okay. And then I think my follow-up question to that with, in regards of it potentially being 13 duplexes, so roughly 26 units with an average of, a minimum of two vehicles per unit on two acres. You have all those homes plus then a number of parking and everything that will be on there. Do you guys feel that, you know, with those impervious circumstances and things that will then be put on the property, that you would still not be causing further stormwater issues?
Yes, that's correct. And actually, for clarification, the maximum number of units would be 18. So it wouldn't be, if we did duplexes, it wouldn't be doubling it to 36. It would just be 18 in, say, eight, nine buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Essinger?
Is there, excuse me, is there any planned onsite retention as part of this project?
Onsite retention will be required per the county's LDC and per the Southwest Florida Water Management District regulations.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, do you have a plan for development if it remains as an RMF six as opposed to an RMF nine?
Yes, sir.
And have you shared those? Do you have that, has that plan been made available?
No, sir, we're not to that point yet. Right now, we're just talking about the rezoning. I can share with you that it will be a duplex-type development, so.
Any additional questions? Thank you, sir. Any discussions? Or can I entertain a motion?
I would love to hear from Mr. Ziegler. I believe this is your district where you live, so I'd love to hear if, how familiar you are with it and what your thoughts are on the property.
Familiar with the area, for sure. I guess the battle here is if we're going to have, if the land use category is already rezoned, and if we're, you know, moving it from an RMF six to a nine, it certainly works with the land use there. At this point, we're not talking about improving the stormwater. That's not what our decision is here. I will tell you that clearly, stormwater should be one of our top priorities when we're looking at this area. I mean, it has to be. But I don't know that the straight zoning of RMF six to nine is going to impact our stormwater at this point. So, and from my case, I think the opportunity to have the housing there, making it available, you know, I'm not opposed to it all. But I think the longer-term vision of improving what's going on there certainly has to be something to take into consideration.
Thank you. Any more discussion or can I entertain a motion?
I'm sorry, we're having issues today. Everything's a little in here.
No problem there.
Yeah, it should be, it should be here.
Yes, ma'am, we got her. So moved by Ms. Kebba and seconded by Ms. Gay, motion passes six to zero. Can we renumber three in the record?
Item number three, PDR 2425ZP Chalets at Lakewood Ranch. It is quasi-judicial, and we have CJ Mills here again for staff. It's a rezone of approximately 11.97 acres, located at the southeast corner of Lorain Road and 44th Avenue East, and commonly known as 4821 Lorain Road, Bradenton. And it's from A to the PDR zoning district, approving a preliminary site plan for 35 single-family detached residential units.
Thank you. Has there been any ex parte communications? Can we have a brief introduction by the applicant, please?
Hi, good morning. Linda Stewart with Morris Engineering representing the applicant. I have been sworn. This is for the Chalets at Lakewood Ranch, located at the southeast corner of 44th and Lorain. This is an aerial view showing the location situated around existing residential uses. The current zoning is A, and we are requesting a PDR rezone. The future land use of MUC AC3 and MUCR is not being requested for modification. And since it is residential, we'll be using the MUCR future land use designation. This is a color rendition of the site plan, showing a large water management lake area up in the northwest corner of the property, with one internal road cul-de-sac-ing at the east and west ends of the road. They are single-family detached lots, minimum, well, they're 4,600 square feet, 35 lots. We have a open space of 50%, which far exceeds the required open space regulation for the property. We have one entrance onto 44th Avenue. This is a typical architectural rendering of a single-story building and a potential two-story building. We had a neighborhood workshop in October of 2024. We had one person call in who lived to the south, just asking what we were going to put there, and she didn't have any other concerns or comments. We do have school availability for the development. Utility locations are existing on 44th as well as on Lorain for the property. She can see development trends within the area. We are in infill development, and we're compatible and consistent with the existing residential uses in the area. And this shows the residential subdivisions that are approved, again, showing that we are consistent and compatible with the residential use of the property. Proper buffering is in compliance with the Land Development Code, as well as a perimeter six-foot fence around the development. Sidewalks will be on both sides of the internal roadway with the one access out onto 44th We have already designed the stormwater for the property, showing the flow areas for the drainage in the area. We'll maintain the pre-development drainage patterns, and it's located within the Wolf Slough Drainage Basin. There are no listed species located on-site, no wetlands located on-site. And we believe that this is consistent and compatible with the Land Development Code, as well as a comprehensive plan, and we request your approval today. If you have any questions, we're available.
Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Bauer?
How come the only in and out onto this property off of 44th, why not have, with that, and the cul-de-sac, why isn't connecting to Lorain?
I believe there is a, if I remember correctly, that there is a barrier for us getting over to Lorain. Let me get back to the site plan. That we don't have the ability to connect out onto Lorain. Again, this is only 35 units as well. We only have to have two connections if you're over 100 units.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's open this up to public comment. Anybody in the public? His presentation on request. Let's close public comment. Anything from staff, one way or the other?
Well, I could comment on the, one of the decisions, I think, to go to Lorain. We did look at that, and we did talk to them about that, but they're right there near where the turn lanes, the turn lane movement is for the intersection. And like the applicant stated, they're not required to have more than one.
So for staff, we're not too worried about the traffic on 44th? Being able to cross 44th?
Whatever their final design is, they'll have to provide the adequate turn lanes that are required.
Just as it's, you know, continuing to develop out there and traffic continues to increase, you're still looking at what is likely going to be a large portion of the residents requiring to cross over 44th to head west with no traffic signal or anything like that. Is that an issue?
We can have Nelson come up.
Nelson Galiano. That's fine, that's fine. Nelson Galiano Transportation Planner, and I have been sworn regarding the access location is, as Mrs. Denise indicated, one of the criteria is the proximity to the intersection. As you can see here on the, from the traffic study, one of the possibilities, of course, will be use of Lorain, but it will be closest to the intersection, impeding or affecting or impacting the right turn lane on Lorain. And it requires more coordination and more effort to with the current project on Lorain, because this is less than 100 trips, 100 units. It doesn't require two secondary mode of, secondary access. As you see here, the distance between the proposed access and the intersection is longer. It increased visibility, and besides, 44 has an opening where the access is located. Another item that we need to consider is the number of trips. The impact of this development is negligible, because it produced less than, let me, let me check it again to be sure, because it produced less than 50 trips. It means 25 trips in and 14 trips out. It means less than 1.5 trips per minute. It means we don't use to analyze this type of amount of traffic when it's so low in these facilities.
How wide is that median in between the northbound? Is it north or east and west?
I believe it should comply with the county standards, and it should be 12 feet.
It's 20, actually.
20, or bigger, yeah.
The median itself is 20, but once they put their turn lane in there, wherever they put their turn lane, it will be reduced, but right now, it's 20.
Okay.
And the opening was already anticipated. It was left there by our design for access to this parcel, and it exceeds the requirement, the offset distance from the intersection.
The reason I'm just bringing this up is from my own experience on Cortez. I live in San Remo Shores. So what I'm seeing here is you're coming out, if you need to take a left-hand turn, 44th Avenue is curved a little bit, which I don't know how much it impedes visibility and how quickly people are speeding up from the Lorain Road heading east. I just see it potentially as a safety issue, is my point, not being able to see these vehicles. I don't know how fast they're moving. Does that make sense?
Let me explain something. We are at this only level. The access analysis, the operation of the access, and anything related to the access will be in the next stage with the final site plan. We are at this only level, and we see a little bit higher what we are doing. It means it's the suitability of the project with respect to the roadway network. And in this case, it meets the requirements in terms of access location and, yes, access location essentially, again, because the amount of traffic is negligible.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any additional questions for staff? Thank you, sir. Applicant closing comments? Nothing? We have a first from Ms. Kebba. A second by Mr. Essinger, and please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. Please read item four in the record.
Chairman, I think we can open four and five together.
Yes, ma'am, that'd be fine.
So item number four, ordinance 2521, University Park Recreational District, DR number 12, unnamed exclusive golf and country club. It's quasi-judicial, and we have Laura Gonzalez here for our staff planner. It's an amended and restated development order pursuant to chapter 380 for University Exclusive Golf and Country Club, development of regional impact, as amended by ordinance 9513, 9724, 9955, 01-19, 09-46, and 12-20. It's also known as DRI number 12. I am going to go down to item number five now, PDR 8905GR11. It's a revised PDR 8905GR10, and it's unnamed exclusive golf and country club, formerly known as Z8481. It's quasi-judicial. We have Laura Gonzalez here for staff. It's amend and reinstate Manatee County zoning ordinance number PDR 8905GR10, as amended to amend the general development plan to expand the country club, restaurant, and recreational facilities, including a fitness center, from 32,000 square feet up to 65,000 square feet, with a minimum increment of 33,000 square feet, resulting in a total of up to 65,000 square feet. And two, update expiration and build-out dates to reflect previously granted legislative extensions, subject to stipulations as conditions of approval, providing a legal description, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Has there been any ex parte communication as far as to this? Thank you. Can we have a brief introduction from the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, I'm Mark Barnaby with Blaylock Walters. I have been sworn here on behalf of University Park. How brief of a discussion you want to have? I've got a presentation. I'm happy to do that, but it is fairly brief, too.
Well, you can go ahead with that.
All right, we'll jump right to that, then. All right, this is the DRI name. It was very creatively done by Pat Neal way back in the 90s. With me today are Sally Dixon and John, who is our chair of our Board of Supervisors for the University Park Recreation District. We also have other board members and John Fetzak, who is our general manager as well. DRI 12 was originally approved in 1993 as the unnamed exclusive golf and country club. It is now more poetically-named University Park, which I think is better for everybody involved. It is located on University Parkway about 1.2 miles west of I-75. This is the general location of this. On this map, you can see that University Parkway is to the south. Honor Ray kind of winds along the eastern side of this property and then bisects it up at the northern end. This is This is more focused in the area that any improvements would be done. We have a 27-hole golf course. It's a lovely, lovely community with great people. And we have a, we have a dining hall, activity centers and that sort of things. And all we're asking to basically is to approve, is to make those better and address some needs of some of our residents and our patrons. 2018, the University Park Recreation District was established through Manatee County ordinance 1829. And that was later amended by Manatee County ordinance 23-95. District acquired the country club property and amenities in the next year in 2019. And approximately three years ago, God, it's hard to believe, the Board of Supervisors began considering improvements to the country club to address various desires and, and concerns raised by residents and patrons. Through extensive discussions, workshops and meetings, these were held over a three-year period to refine that list of amenities and proposed improvements. Those changes generally were crystallized. I'm going beyond what I normally would, but I want, I think this is important. Golf course irrigation system replacement with lake banks and bulkhead maintenance, kitchen renovation expansion, fitness center renovation and expansion, activities gathering space expansion, staff ADA compliant workspace improvements and additional parking and resurfacing of our parking. And this kind of gives you a general idea. This is in that center of that area that we were talking, I just showed you a minute ago. This kind of shows you generally what we're trying to do. These will be consistent with the design and uses that are currently in that area. It's just to provide a little nicer amenity for, for our folks. These capital improvements were the subject of a bond referendum, which was approved by 62% of the vote in University Park. And that bond issuance was subsequently validated by Circuit Court, but we are currently on appeal before the Florida Supreme Court. As with any major project, some people, most people liked it, some people didn't. And heard, I think, from some of those folks that we're not happy. And that's part of, part of life. Sometimes, can't make everybody happy sometimes. In anticipation of the plan improvements, we actually began this process in 2023 to update that, update this to allow the possible facilities to be done. We saw that we might need some additional square footage, wanted to be careful. And so that's why we're here. Essentially, it's a 30,000 square foot addition. And it will, and it will, it will adjust our square footage cap. Interestingly, some of the larger country club facilities in this area don't have caps on their residential uses, but for some reason we do. So that's why we're here. This, and the DRI and zoning ordinance was amended last in 2012. That was 13 years ago. Obviously, there have been some statutory changes that we just threw in there to address those. And there were some legislative extensions that occurred and this ordinance also reflects that. And so again, we're asking amendments to MAP H and the development order to allow a maximum of 65,000 square feet. Updating of the expiration and build-out dates to reflect previously granted legislative extensions and amending the requirement to file reports from an annual to biannual basis if it's required by the county. Because PDR 89-05G 11, notice this is going to be the 11th amendment to that over the years. Those two, two ordinances parallel each other, we're asking for the same things on this one. Modifying the maximum square footage, the country club facilities to 65,000 square feet and updating expiration and build-out dates to reflect previously granted legislative extensions. We believe this is very compatible with this area. It's a very nice community and that's the intention to keep it that way. This is consistent with your Conference of Plan and it's consistent with your Land Development Code. And we respectfully request a recommendation of approval and we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Barnaby. At this time, let's open it up to public comment.
Good morning. My name is Sally Dixon. I have been sworn. I'm going to be a little bit redundant here, but what I'd like to say is that my husband and I have been members of the University Park Country Club for nine years and we purchased our home in the park seven years ago. And I was elected to the RD Board of Supervisors in 2020 and I currently serve voluntarily as chairperson. 30-plus years ago, the developer of University Park had plans to sell over 1,200 lots and a big part of the appeal would be the country club with 27 holes of golf, dining and other amenities as the central feature. Once the residential lots were sold, we, the residents overwhelmingly voted to purchase the club and establish ourselves as a recreation district. Fast forward to today, I want to express my support for the Recreation District's request to update zoning and DRI approvals for increased square footage, allowing for the improvement and expansion of recreational and operational facilities. For years, the district has worked toward responsible, long-term planning to better meet the needs of the community. The proposed improvements will help preserve and enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. Whether through improved dining, wellness offerings or essential back-of-house infrastructure, these updates are a natural step forward for our community. The district has been transparent throughout this process, holding numerous public meetings and workshops to ensure residents have been informed and involved and had a voice. When it came time for voting on financing, more than 62% of the household supported our bond referendum. That vote underscores the widespread belief that these upgrades are not just desired, but are necessary. This amendment is about accommodating a diligently prepared master plan and allowing for some future flexibility. I respectfully ask for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public? At this time, let's close public comment. Anything from staff in reference to adding to this one way or the other?
Good morning, commissioners. This is Laura Gonzalez and I have been sworn. If you have any question regarding this project, I have a presentation too, as you prefer.
I don't think a presentation is required. Any questions for staff, though?
I just have a quick question, Ms. Schenk. The, the pending matter before the Florida Supreme Court, that has no bearing on this request, does it?
No, you're correct. The soljuition, the planning commission is viewing for consistent concept plan and land development code requirements. We don't get into financing either for a special district or for private individuals.
Thank you. Just clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Anything from applicant?
Okay.
At this time, any additional discussion or could I entertain a motion for number five, then number six afterwards? I'm sorry, number four and five. You're good on this one. First by Mr. Ziegler, second by Ms. Gay, and please cast your votes. Motion passes six to zero. And item number five. First by Mr. Bowers, seconded by Ms. Gay and wins approval six to zero. Thank you, sir. Please read item six in the record.
Item number six, PDR 2415 ZG Pope Ranch.
They like to take a five-minute break if possible. Yep, let's be back at 10:15. Thank you. The planning commission, and please read item six into record.
Okay, item number six, PDR 2415 ZG Pope Ranch. It is quasi judicial and James McDevitt is here for staff. It's a rezone of approximately 217.36 acres containing two parcels. Parcel A is approximately 188 acres and an approximate 29.1 acre portion of parcel B. And it's from general agricultural coastal evacuation area, coastal planning area to planned development residential zoning district, retaining the overlays. Generally located along County Road 675, which is also known as Rutland Road in parish with one parcel commonly known as 16525 County Road 675. And it's approving a general development plan for 440 single-family residential units.
Thank you. Has there been any ex parte communications? Applicant's presentation, please.
Good morning. I haven't been sworn in. Thank you. My name is Jag Repnerian, Division President with Simply Dwell Homes. We'd like to request an additional five minutes for the presentation.
Sure.
Thank you. Today, we're talking about Pope Ranch, another community for Simply Dwell Homes. We currently have a community called Broadleaf in Manatee County. We are proud to say we are selling homes in the high 200s in that community. We do so through simplifying the build process. We build in order. We build in advance. We provide complete homes that are move-in ready for people that are in a rental proposition. And we do so by value engineering the homes so we're able to achieve these prices. So we're excited about having another community, looking forward to your continued support on this project and many more to come. So, thank you.
Good morning, planning commissioners. For the record, Rhea Hunter with RVI Planning and Landscape Architecture, and I have been sworn. It is a pleasure to be back before this board today for the Pope Ranch Plan Development. Here with me today, we have several representatives of the Simply Dwell Homes team, which is the applicant for this case. We also have a team of consultants, our land use attorney, Edward Wogler with Wogler Ashton, our environmental consultant, Chris Kennedy with Kimley Horn, our project engineer, Brian Jackson with Atwell, and our traffic consultant, Becca Bond with Kimley Horn. As most of you were on the board when we previously came before you in, in February, welcome Commissioner Zyglow. As you know, at that point, we were, our project was consistent with provisions of the Land Development Code as well as the comprehensive plan. But even then, with recent storm events, there were still concerns raised. Today, we are excited to bring this presentation before the board because we have a solution in mind that we would like to talk about. So I'm going to start off with just providing a brief overview of the request again and then we'll dive into those areas of concern that were presented at our past hearing. So the request before you today is related to the subject property outlined and read on the screen before you. This is located on Rutland Road. We are seeking a rezone from general agricultural to planned development residential. This property, as well as much of its surroundings, are in the urban fringe three, future land use district. What we are doing is putting in a residential cap of 440 dwelling units at a gross density of two dwelling units to an acre. Our request to rezone is with a general development plan and that is what you see on the screen before you. Again, we are seeking a maximum of Again, we are seeking a maximum of 440 dwelling units. I want to remind the board again that based on the UF3 future land use designation, as well as accounting for any wetland impacts and density reductions based on the comprehensive plan, as well as the Land Development Code, the maximum development yield of this project is 644 dwelling units. So as we are presenting it, we are seeking 200, over 200 units lesser than what the future land use permits for this property. The project will be served by an onsite amenity area and will be a quality residential development for future residents. Besides this, there are a number of factors that we have put into the design of the project in order to ensure that it is compatible with surrounding residential lots, as well as maintains the character of the area, first and foremost being the density being limited to two dwelling units to an acre. Secondly, we have also limited the units to only single family detached residential. Besides this, we are providing for green belt as well as roadway buffers within the project. I want to note that we are providing an enhanced green belt buffer adjacent to residential lots along Rutland Road. This has been stipulated within the land use and design stipulation A10 in your staff report. The project will also have at minimum 35% of open space, and a large portion of that open space is clustered along the southwestern portion of the property where the Gambel Creek is present. Going through some of the environmental and transportation aspects, the project has historically been used for agriculture. We are proposing a clustered residential community where residential development will be clustered towards the eastern portion away from the Gambel Creek. This has engendered some wetland impacts in order to accommodate the residential development, but this will be mitigated through mitigation bank credits as well as onsite wetland creation. The preservation that we are proposing exceeds code requirements. Those are all the areas that you see on pink on the GDP, and as you can see, they're clustered along the Gambel Creek, again, to just maintain that ecological network along the Gambel Creek. In terms of transportation, the project will have two access points to Rutland Road, which is a county thoroughfare. We have conducted a traffic study with our general development plan application, and a detailed traffic study will be conducted at final site plan to determine what improvements are needed in order to accommodate the project. Coming to our project timeline, we have been working on this project hand in hand with Manatee County staff for a year at this point. We had our pre-application meeting back in April of 2024. Throughout the process, we have actively engaged with residents of this community. We first hosted a virtual neighborhood workshop in September of 2024. We then had an in-person neighborhood workshop of November of 2024. Besides this, we've also had numerous site visits, phone calls, and emails exchanged with these residents, and the intent was to understand the context better. And all the information and input that they provided us through the process has informed our solutions today that we will be presenting to the board. When we were before the board in February, there were two concerns that we thought required further discussion. The first one, which is, I think, the more minor one, is detail regarding the focal point of recreational facility within the project. And the second matter, which I think is the most important one on everybody's minds today, stormwater management. So I'm going to touch on the first one. As I mentioned in the presentation in February, as well as at the start of this presentation, there were always plans to have a recreational amenity within this project. Today, what we've done is we've conceptually depicted that location of the amenity on our general development plan to further cement that intent. The amenity center that we're proposing will be located near the northern entrance, so it'll be easily accessible within the community. The other thing, and we've shown this graphic to staff as well, is a conceptual representation of what this amenity center is going to look like. So this is going to be an active recreational amenity. It is going to have a swimming pool, dog park, playground, community lawn, and all these recreational elements that will truly provide future residents active recreational opportunities and opportunities for community and gathering. Coming next to stormwater management. As we established at the previous hearing, stormwater management and flooding in this area is a regional issue. And to address anything that is a regional issue, it requires a lot of collaboration, collaboration between the county, residents that already live in this area, as well as new development coming into this area. Over the past two months, we have worked hand in hand with staff on what those solutions could be, and we're excited to present it today. I'm going to invite our engineer Brian Jackson to talk through those details. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhea. Good morning. My name is Brian Jackson with Atwell Engineering, and I have been sworn. During the last Planning Commission meeting, there was extensive discussion related to stormwater in light of flooding that occurred in this area due to the hurricanes this last fall, especially for residents along Jim Davis Road who are located in the floodway of Gambel Creek. Pope Ranch is located east of Gambel Creek, and all improvements are located outside of FEMA's regulated floodway and outside of the 50-foot buffer to that floodway. At the last presentation, we presented a project that met all stormwater codes and regulations from both the county and the state level. We presented a project that would provide a reduction of 50% of stormwater flow for the 25-year design storm, a project that would show no off-site staging increases for the two, 10, 25, and 100-year design storms, a project that would maintain historical drainage patterns, and a project that would accept and convey stormwater run-on from upstream neighbors to make sure there's no blockages and flooding upstream. Still, there were concerns. One of the concerns had to do with Gambel Creek itself being a viable option as a stormwater conveyance due to the fact that it's been historically unmaintained, there's overgrowth in it, and it's known to be, have debris within it. On that note, Manatee County is doing their part. On March 25th, Manatee County approved funding for maintenance to occur within Gambel Creek from Golf Course Road up to Jim Davis, Jim Davis Bridge adjacent to this property to clear debris and maintain the channel. That is expected to significantly improve the functionality of the channel and benefit not only this project, but the community overall. The other concern that was raised was the potential that this project may impact stormwater and flooding during high storm events, even though the project did meet all of that code. We're here to present what we are proposing to mitigate those concerns. After that meeting that we had last time, Pat Neal met with us and charged us with designing a project that would lead the way when it came to stormwater management, one that would go above and beyond the current requirements and be part of the solution. On that note, we are proposing to proffer the following stipulations that go above and beyond what's required by current county code and by current SWF mud code. These stipulations can be found in the staff report and will be written into the approval for the project. The project proposes to utilize the NOAA 14 rainfall totals to design the project's stormwater management system. The project shall provide extensive sole purpose floodplain compensation areas adjacent to Gambel Creek. The project will provide rear yard percolation swales to promote infiltration of stormwater. The project will provide a non-exclusive flow adjustment over the floodway of Gambel Creek for access and maintenance for Manatee County crews. The project will provide a non-exclusive access adjustment through the portions of the development to provide access and access point from our development to Gambel Creek, which they currently do not have. And the project will set all finished floor elevations two foot above base flood elevations for any lots within the current floodplain. Utilizing the 100-year NOAA rainfall totals has major site plan implications to this project. If you look at the table right now, the current standard for Manatee and SWF mud and FEMA for this area for the 100-year design storm is set at 10 inches of rainfall. Moving above that to the NOAA standards, it's 11.9 inches of rainfall. For this project to adhere to those standards, there is significant and real costs required and real steps that needed to be made in order to make that achievable. The entire site has to be raised in elevation to adhere to the stage increases from during different storm events. The onsite infrastructure has to be increased in size to handle the higher design flows from the storms. And adjacent to Gambel Creek, extensive sole use floodplain compensation areas have to be added in a much greater extent than was previously. The sole use floodplain compensation areas are areas adjacent to Gambel Creek that allow stormwater to flow into during high storm events and store water onsite. The original presentation that we had for this project estimated about, or we had about 5.2 acres of floodplain compensation area. In this project right now that we are coming forward today, we've got over 13 acres or an increase of 240% of stormwater floodplain compensation ponds or compensation areas. We are proposing rear yards percolation swales at the back of all of the homes and all of the lots, be able to promote infiltration of the stormwater and take the stormwater offline and out of the stormwater management system to reduce flows that would go into Gambel Creek. As mentioned, we are providing a flow adjustment over the portion of our property that would allow access and perpetual maintenance of Gambel Creek by Manatee County crews. We would have the access easement from our property that would allow Manatee County to have direct, clear access, be able to get into those areas. And we would be setting the finished floors two feet above the base flood elevations for lots within the floodplain for protection of future residents of this development. In general, all of this combined really does lead the way when it comes to stormwater management and what we're doing right now. It goes above and beyond the current requirements, and it really is a part of the solution for not only this project, but for the area. And with that, I'll hand it back to Rhea. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. So in conclusion, this project from the very start set out to add attainable housing options within Manatee County. We are still staying true to that goal. However, we are working in collaboration with Manatee County as well as existing residents in this area to address flooding in this region. This project leads the way, as we've mentioned, about how a project can be sensitively introduced into an area of known flooding. We've specifically stipulated the conditions relating to stormwater so that we are beholden to them as the project goes through design detail at final site plan. The project is entirely consistent with Manatee County's comprehensive plan as well as land development code. I want to state here again that we have multiple stipulations that have been introduced into the staff report and will be in the final ordinance that go above and beyond code requirements in order to make sure that this project is compatible and sensitive to existing conditions in this area. So with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Pat Neal to close our presentation.
Thank you, Rhea. This is the closing of the close. I'm Pat Neal, 10003 59th Street Northwest, and I have been sworn, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we've built about one out of every 10 or 11 homes in Manatee County, about 24,700 homes. We learned about two years ago, Mr. Chairman, that we didn't sell very many homes to hometown heroes, people who lived and worked here, people in our school district or people in our public service. We just didn't sell it to them. We were selling 63% of our homes to people from out of state. So the short version is, because of interest rates and all the rest, we didn't, our average home was about $659,000, and we just didn't sell any. So we made the decision two years ago, I guess two and a half years ago, to employ the best executive that we could find, whose name turned out to be Jag Rupnerian, who you've already heard from, and he is a pro in building cost-effective housing. But to do that, we have to buy land that's not terribly expensive, we have to develop in such a way that it's not too expensive, we have to build a simple home, we have to build a high-quality home, we've got to supplant the mortgage and pay down the interest rates, so it's hard. Still and all, we currently build and sell homes in Manatee County from $289,000 in Simply Dwell. Please give us a chance on this project to lead the way on the drainage matter and get us to the county commission if we can, for the purpose of expressing four new ways to solve the drainage as well as building a cost-effective home. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you for your presentation. I do have a couple of questions. One, I think, that is concerning probably for neighboring properties and individuals is when they hear that the entirety of the property is going to be built up. They would, I think, if you're able to offer any kind of explanation to them, that if you're all of a sudden putting these properties X amount of feet above the elevation of our homes, how is that going to affect runoff into and potential flooding impacts on their own homes?
Yeah, no, thank you. Brian Jackson again. So we have to maintain the natural drainage patterns as they are today. So any stormwater that's coming onto our site has, we have to convey through our property, and we will be conveying through our property to get towards Gambel Creek from west to east, or from east to west. So if the roads that are built up, if the lots that are built up, those drainage pathways are still going to be maintained, whether it be via channels or culverts or other storm drainage mechanisms. Then on the downstream side, all of our stormwater from the homes and the residences and the streets will be going into stormwater management ponds that will be detaining that stormwater. So any stormwater that's detained on our property or that's generated from our property has a 50% flow reduction from what is there today. So even though it's built up, it's going to be going to the same place that it's going to today, and it's going to be going at a less velocity or flow that's going today.
Okay, thank you. One of the other things I think that is-
May I be a Jack in the Box, please?
Absolutely.
I think a Jackson box just pops up at any time the spring goes up. Remember that we'll have a property protection swale. The homes will be two feet above BFE, two feet above the raised flood elevation, but then there's the yards and the streets. We've taken special precautions, especially against the homes in the north that have an extreme property protection swell, and I don't think that neighboring residents will perceive this community being higher than their own. I might say one other thing, Elisa, which is we've built homes ever since SWF mud, 1986, three and four and five feet above the neighbors, and we know how to do that, and we'll take adequate protection to make sure that we do so.
Thank you. Additional question that I think is a concern of residents is traffic mitigation on Rutland Road. I know that there, right around this project, this proposed project, last week, there was a fatality and a head-on collision, so I would love to hear any plans on that and if the developer is planning on contributing towards the cost of widening and things for that property.
Good morning. Becca Bond with Kimley Horn Traffic and Transportation Engineer for this project. I have been sworn. So I first want to touch on the fact that, yes, there have been crashes along this corridor. There hasn't been any details posted as to, you know, the contributing factors that I've seen for the crash that was most recent. I do know that previous fatalities, unfortunately, I mean, as a traffic engineer, I wish I could prevent all of them. That would be amazing. The two that were, the two previous fatalities, one was due to high speeds, and it was a single-vehicle accident, and the other one, let me pull up my details so I don't misspeak, but the other one was related to negligent driving. So those are two things when we're a traffic engineer, we look at, you know, what are mitigating factors that we could, like, present any mitigation to prevent these crashes? Unfortunately, those are two reasons that, you know, our driver created and are not easily mitigated. However, when we talk about this development, we do recognize the fact that, you know, there are traffic impacts, fully recognized. We worked with staff here, with the transportation planning staff, to talk about, you know, future mitigation. What is necessary is widening along Rutland Road, and that is what we will dig into that in additional details in the final site plan. And I know that we've received pushback on, from previous Planning Commission meetings and board meetings on, you know, we wish that we had that answer now. The reality is that, you know, we have to look into the details, and we have all the lots laid out, and we know every detail of the site and what is actually, what we can mitigate. However, what we've talked about here is, in the future, when we get to that final site plan stage, yes, impact fees will need to be paid. Those will go towards whatever mitigation the county identifies is necessary for the widening. And I will say that Rutland Road in the future thoroughfare plan is planned as a six-lane roadway. So this is not out of the ordinary and not out of what is planned for the county. Six lanes would not be necessary for this development, but that is what's in the county's future vision for this roadway. Additionally, there will be, we haven't documented this because this is part of the final site plan, but we've looked into it, there will be turn lanes required, so that will also increase safety as people are entering and exiting this development. I'm happy to answer any more specific questions. I know that was a lot of information. I know that was a lot of information.
Thank you.
Ms. Kibbe?
I just had a question on the Gamble Creek maintenance and cleanup, when that would start? Would that be ongoing? Oh, right. Somebody?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
The question is about the Gamble Creek cleanup that the county is, is going to do, when that would start, if it would be ongoing.
I'm sorry, I don't, I know they've done some cleanup already, but I don't know when it's going to be completed. And I think they're also requesting extra funding soon also.
Okay, that's what I heard. Yeah, I just, you know, that it would be ongoing so it doesn't become the same situation. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Bauer?
Can you bring up that map again that showed the flow of this new design that you've been discussing? All right, so the, the blue arrows, that's suggesting the, the water flow, correct?
Correct, yeah, that's the general direction of flow.
So within this presentation of how this is supposed to work, how is it different than what was previously proposed in the last hearing?
The, kind of stated before, the, the general flow pattern doesn't change. We can't change it. So especially at our boundaries, where it comes in, it comes in, where it goes out, it goes out. So we're not modifying that in any way. We have to maintain historical drainage patterns. The, I'd say the biggest two factors that we've gone through, as far as the most impactful, we've gone above and beyond in other ways as well, but the two most impactful factors that we've done is, is the expansion of the floodplain compensation ponds from 5.2 acres approximately to 13.6 acres approximately, adjacent to Gamble Creek, that will accept water from Gamble Creek during high flood storms and hold that water onsite. And then the second is utilizing the NOAA-14 standards, which is going to raise the site and requires, requires our ponds be significantly larger than what the standard would be. So technically, the staging between what is required and what the current NOAA-14 rainfall dictates is all onsite flood compensation that we are providing. So there's, you know, from a horizontal perspective, other than the layout of the additional floodplain compensation ponds, it doesn't necessarily look like significant, but it is.
All right, so looking at the screen in the lower right-hand, you've got two blue arrows going through what is presumably homes, the, the yellow, right? How is it doing that?
So there's going to be, so there's two swales on the, on the east side, sorry, two, the two arrows that are pointing to it, we're going to capture those via swales. And there's, in existing, there's a ditch right now that just runs right through that section. And so we're going to maintain that via drainage easements and culvert system to maintain that flow from east to west.
So the biggest thing for me, and I think you heard from me before, is this is effectively creating an island, right? In between these homes and then Gamble Creek, but mostly you're raising the level, right, that's adjacent to these homes, I guess, to the north.
Yeah.
Makes sense? Okay? So no matter what you do with your property, mitigating that 50% of the runoff so forth, that water running through these homes to the north basically hit an island. So the water doesn't have anywhere to go but build up on them per se until it starts to dissipate around or eventually through. But what I'm seeing here potentially is that somehow these, you're putting wetlands to, adjacent to these homes, so it flows, keeps flowing through the home.
Yeah, no, I was going to let you finish, but that, that isn't actually necessarily accurate how you describe that. So the water that's coming through from the north to Gamble Creek that goes through our property, we're not creating an island, we're not blocking that stormwater, we're accepting every bit of that stormwater that's coming through. So if it's coming through today, it's going to come through via channels, stormwater canals, culverts, or otherwise through our property as it is today in a similar manner. So there is no blocking of that stormwater, that stormwater's not going to build up and go around or eventually get through, it's, it's going to get through, we're creating those pathways.
But my point is, is that the homes to the north, as it stands now with it not being built up or anything-
Right.
-that water is effectively flowing from, call it the north, to northwest towards Gamble Creek through your property.
Correct.
Right? If you built it up, right, to build on-
It'll still, still do that.
It's still going to do that.
Right.
So explain to me how it's going to do that.
Maybe, I'm Ed Vogler, I have been sworn, and I'm a layperson like you. Neither of us are engineers, right? So if you're talking about the homes that are on Rutland Road and those properties, you can see that they drain on our site. And because the engineers will design swales and pipes, the same water we'll take will come onto our site. It will come onto our site. We have to, by regulatory requirement. Those folks, if you're worried about those folks up there, they're discharging on us and it won't change. Zero, can't. Now if you say, well, wait a minute, what about the people on Jim Davis Road on the other side of the creek? What about those people? They came here and testified. So the thing that is always lost in this is we have to reduce the pre-development flows by 50%. What does that mean? That means when it's vacant and agricultural today and it discharges 100 gallons a minute or something when it rains, we have to make that 50 gallons a minute after we build all the homes, after we build the homes. Say, well, how do you do that? You retain it on your site. So, oh, the leadership of the planning commission, last time you said, you got to do more. Okay, so we're doing more. And he answered it twice, right? Five acres of floodplain management to 13 acres. So the onsite areas where the water is going to stage is much larger, 240% larger, larger than our first proposal, larger than any requirement of any governmental entity, directly responsive to the concerns that this board has raised. I think that when a developer does that, you should say, thank you for listening to us, thank you for leading, right? And I don't think, you know, if I'm a professional engineer who has spent hours working on this at the direction of our client, and to be asked whether it's really going to work, it's not nice.
I'm sorry you feel that way, it's still my question.
But it's going to work and it's extraordinary and it's great leadership and we're trying to do it in an affordable community, harder. So I hope that helps as a layperson.
As a layperson, I'm going to ask the questions I want to ask her, and I don't appreciate that very much at all, but that's what my record, so.
And I know that, Commissioner Bauer, and you're certainly entitled to ask any question you want, that is clearly true. But even when an engineer who is not a professional advocate like an attorney says that your premise of your question is wrong, it's not helpful to the public or to the other commissioners. So somebody has to say that. You can answer the question, you can ask the question, but you have to listen to the answer.
I would disagree respectfully. The vast majority of the public don't, doesn't understand this information at all. So to inquire, your engineer, to simplify the process, to explain it, if you want the public to get on your side, you got to explain it in their terms so they can understand it and potentially get them behind you. I need to understand it so I can make my decision up here. However, I need to understand it. That's where I go with a lot of my questions, is so that we can present this to the public so they can understand this in better terms. That is the premise of my question, sir. Thank you.
Is there any additional questions? I think Ms. Greer had a clarification from the applicant.
I do, I do. So one of the stipulated conditions that you proffered was to for, to have any lots proposed within the FEMA floodplain, all finished floor elevation shall be two feet above base flood elevation. And just for the commission, so they know, it's typically right now in our code, one foot, or in our standard design, finished floors have to be 21 inches above the crown, the highest crown of the road. So that is a stipulation that they proffered, but then, I'm sorry, Mr. Neal got up and said that all finished floors will be two feet above the established seasonal high elevation. So are you proposing to establish finished floors two feet above the seasonal high, the 1%?
Denise, I should have said two feet above BFE, it's an FHA standard.
Okay, so it's not going to be above the 100-year storm, or I'm sorry, the 1% flood hazard elevation in the stormwater ponds?
No.
Okay. So my next question is, is it your intent to do a lomar to remove the lots from the floodplain once you add the fill?
Of course.
Okay, so in effect, it is not your intent to leave any homes within the floodplain? So really, that condition-
As you might know, Denise, we, every property we do in Manatee County has a lomar, almost every property on anywhere near a conveyance, so the answer is yes, we'll remove it vertically out of the floodplain.
Okay, all right. So that condition may not apply unless you happen to leave a lot in the floodplain, so...
Yeah, correct answer will be given to you.
Yeah, no, so, right, so if it's in the floodplain right now, irrespective of whether it's going to be removed or not, it will be two feet above whatever that stated BFE is. So even whether that gets removed, if it, if it's laid out within the floodplain as it is, it'll be raised.
So you mean the existing floodplain?
Yeah, based with the FEMA-
The way it is today?
Correct.
So any home that's in the floodplain today, it is your intent to have it at least two feet above that BFE?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and there's a rigid stipulation that says exactly like that. We drafted it and we submitted it. And so that's, that's just tight.
Okay. Well, it says, any lots proposed within the FEMA floodplain. So, so what that means to me is if you remove it from the floodplain, when you then come in with your building permits, it will then have been out of the floodplain. So I would like to change that condition to say, any lots proposed within the existing FEMA floodplain as it is today.
But that's accurate, I mean, I don't see an issue with that.
I don't either.
Okay, yeah, no, that's the intent of how it's intended to be written and interpreted.
Because words matter and the words weren't quite lining up, but-
Yeah, no, we're good.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Any additional questions for applicant? Can we have staff presentation?
Good morning, Planning Committee, good morning, Plan Commission. For the record, James McDevitt with Development Services, and I have been sworn. The applicant went over this project very detailed and we came before you before and had a brief discussion at that point, so I'll be very brief myself here. We already know where we are, we know we're in the UF3 and we're currently zoned A. Their request is to go to PDR with a general development plan for 440 single-family units at a density of 2.02 dwelling units per gross acre. They have two access points as required by the number of units for Rutland Road and they're proposing one specific approval. For the record, I want to make sure it's clear that they showed a couple of exhibits showing home sites or general locations of home sites indicated in yellow color. This is the GDP that's being provided and proposed and asked for approval, this level of detail. I do want to provide a couple of notes. As mentioned, they do have access on Rutland Road, at least two. They are proposing an enhanced green belt buffer adjacent to the northeast where home sites are along Rutland Road. They did hold a neighborhood workshop and spoke with the neighbors and received feedback from them. They are providing additional stormwater conditions, which we're just discussed at length, and this is the level of detail, as I mentioned before, that they're proposing. Here's the information about their typical lot details, their minimum lot size 4,000, lot width is 35 feet, and the setbacks are provided in, similar to other PDRs. Here's their specific approval request, the minimum front setback be reduced for the second side to be treated as a side for setback purposes from 20 to 10. And here's just a general overview of some of the properties nearby, some of the adjacent projects. We can see that the values range between 1.96 and 2.96. We're again at 2.02, so this is about in the middle. Again, here's the stormwater conditions, these are simplified versions but of the same intent. They were already discussed at length, so we don't need to harp on that too much on mine side. Again, the UF3 does anticipate this type of residential development, the project has a frontage along access, frontage and access on County Road 675, which is a rural major collector, and services and utilities are available to serve the site. I do want to also mention that the applicant has provided a general location of the Menity Center, and there was a negative aspect that was part of the original staff report that will be removed for the board. So the negative aspects, the GDP does not provide sufficient detail for staff to analyze site design, location of specific residential uses, and the compatibility with surrounding residential developments. The project area is adjacent to agricultural uses, so the access proposed adjacent to residential and agricultural uses may cause noise, light, adverse impacts. There are 5.6 acres of wetlands impacts proposed, 15 potentially occurring occupied gopher tortoise burrows are identified in the preliminary listed species survey. Rutland Road will exceed the level of service capacity due to additional trips generated by this project, and the project is located in an auto-dependent area. So mitigating measures is that the proposed development must comply with all the applicable standards of the land development code, including buffering, screening, setbacks, and building heights. The development potential has been reduced for the site per LDC Section 7069 due to those wetland impacts, and that the applicant will be required to pay their proportionate share for any improvements to public infrastructure. And again, as mentioned before, they did provide a proffered stipulation for an enhanced green belt buffer adjacent to residential uses along Rutland Road. In conclusion, staff finds that the request can be found to be consistent with the applicable policies of the comprehensive plan and the standards of the land development code. Staff will review a thorough analysis at time of final site plan for compliance with these and other standards. I'm here if you have any questions.
And I would like to add a little bit, based on the meeting that James and I had with the applicant regarding stormwater, stipulations four, five, six, and seven under stormwater were what, were the additional proffered conditions? And just, I don't know if your, if your question got answered about what's different, but they have provided a drainage, a public drainage and maintenance access easement of 30 feet along the top of bank, that's, that's typically larger than what we require. And then they are going to utilize the NOAA-14 rainfall totals, which is something that you've heard Tom Gerstenberger talk about, and Tom was also in the meeting with us. And so we talked about that. They are also, something that, that I think is a great addition, is they are going to do the sole use floodplain areas and not have it within the ponds, but a separate floodplain compensation area. And then they also are going to have an easement for county staff to be able to get to the creek exclusive of any lot. It won't be one of these easements that go down lot lines, it's going to be exclusive of any lot lines, which is also a plus. And then you did just hear us discuss about the two-foot above base flood elevation. But I just wanted to let you know, those were the changes that were recently made based on meetings, additional meetings that staff had with the applicant.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Yeah, just on the stormwater part, I know Tom's not here, I should have asked the engineer that you can answer maybe on closing, but if they, assuming they build before Gamble Creek is all cleared out, is the project going to have a positive, negative, or indifferent result on this?
Well, one, I do want to clarify, I did hear from Tom that they just, they, they are starting some of that construction today, okay? So that they have mobilized to start some of those maintenance improvements.
Okay, but just go back to my original question, just if Gamble Creek is not cleared out by the time this property is developed, is it going to have a positive, negative, or indifferent impact on the community because the water- going to have a positive, negative, or indifferent impact on the community because the water's still not flowing anywhere, still backing up, so to speak?
And I will let them respond to that for you, but they are going to use the latest elevations that we did receive from some of those back-to-back storms. So, and those elevations were a result of Gamble Creek as it is today, so.
I'll let the applicant address that once we get back there.
Ms. Gag?
Question for staff. The existing infrastructure that we have from the county, is it sufficient to support the neighborhood? I was, could you just clarify on that because it says in one area that it is, but then it says a mitigating factor is that the developer is required for improvement.
Are we talking about the, the roadways?
Water, sewer, et cetera.
With regards to water and sewer, I can answer that. We have ongoing projects right now today that are making upgrades to our systems along 675, a forced main in particular. So, but the plant has the capacity to accept drainage from this area, so if, if they need to increase a water main or a forced main for this site, then they will have to make those adjustments. But our downstream infrastructure is able to handle the capacity.
Okay, thank you. And then if we are able to hear from traffic, Mr. Chair, that would be great.
Commission, Nelson Galeno Transportation Planning, I have been sworn regarding this project. Right now, we have a intersection improvement on railroad and County Road 675, Rutland. As the traffic study stated, this is necessary, the widening of the Rutland, no doubt. This is one of the areas where we have experienced a huge grow, and we need to, we need to understand another item, and it is, yes, as Mrs. Rebecca Bond indicated, and it is on the map series five, this facility will be six lane in the future, in the long term. Long term in this case will be 2045. However, there are two, there are two or three items that we need to understand. The first one is our current regulation is auto-oriented regulation. It means it's focused essentially on capacity, and that is the type of improvement that has been detected. Identify and mitigate it by means of the proportionate shares and the alternative transportation system, the fees. That is one thing. The other thing is we need to understand how will we be moving in the next 20 years? And, and that is one of the, these facilities, one of the first facilities that we want to start analyzing in terms of how will be. The county will start in, I will say in one month, a preliminary corridor analysis on, on Rutland with different items. It means the interaction between transportation and land use, traffic. It will be some chapter about drainage and some, another, another chapter regarding economic development in order to provide better information how will we be in 20 years and provide information for better decisions. Right now, in books, we have more than 2,000 trips reserved along the facility. The explosion of grow is one to 10. It will be one of our, our future projects at the county.
Any additional questions? Thank you, staff. Thank you.
I was also going to let Ms. Gag also know that we recently had a project creekside at Rutland Ranch that had to do some improvements to 675, and we are requiring paved shoulders wherever they have to do their improvements for their turn lanes. And also, any impacts to the stormwater ditch system that's along 675, they will have to show us how they're maintaining the existing capacity when they put in those turn lanes. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's open it up to public comments. Please step forward, say, state your name and that you have been sworn.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Anthony Shulo. I'm a Manatee County resident, adjacent property owner here on Jim Davis Road. Thank you so much for your time. I have been sworn early this morning. Let's see here, I'm going to try to turn the volume down. My phone is literally blowing up from every resident that's on my, on my street, in my neck of the woods over there. I'm sorry I'm eating up my time, but I have to tell you that because those folks are working today. They haven't had a chance to come down to multiple meetings here to express their concerns. I'd also like to thank Mr. Neal and the rest of the staff. As much as I disagree with them, they are trying their best to do, to cram 10 pounds of stuff into a five-pound bag here. I do appreciate their, their, their efforts, I really do, but I still disagree. Here you are again reviewing an amended project plan that was denied in February. A project that was rejected largely due to inconsistency with the county's Land Development Code as it applies to project timing. That's what was mentioned in February, project timing. I'd like to request once again that you reject this project based on the same applicable code section, timing. The Board of County Commissioners and their decisions of late have been aimed at stabilizing infrastructure problems, problems caused by land reshaping like the one before you. They need help planning an area you are directly involved in. Planning to help existing residents who are being adversely impacted. Planning for future residents who may unknowingly themselves find themselves in extremis, high on a hill with a 10-foot earthen embankment around them as the water goes away. Please reject this project as proposed and let the applicant attempt to proceed with the Board of County Commissioners to sort it out. What I implore you not to do is send them a project that in effect takes two steps backwards on their infrastructure problems. Backwards for stormwater management, backwards with traffic management, two steps back. The county is actively trying to mitigate the problems we are facing. Efforts to mitigate reckless decisions that got us here over the past decade. $1.3 million of a total $2 million emergency funding measure was just approved for Gamble Creek alone. The lion's share of a $2 million project is just going to Gramble Creek just to clean out trees. No project, no construction. Please recognize it is not construction. This is clearing snags only. There is no project plan approved to do any slope work, bottom drainage, anything in Gamble Creek. Please do not recognize the work that is happening as early as 6:00 AM, which I saw when I brought coffee to those guys this morning before I left my house. That is not dredge work. They are cleaning fallen trees only, exotic species removal under the contract as written. This is not digging and creating more water flow. Please understand that. Please ask your engineer, if possible, to, to clarify that with what they are actually doing there. This should, this should convince you that this is bad timing, not to mention the uncertainty that Lake Manatee reservoir capability has and its resilience in a storm. I'd also suggest you consider the fatality, like you mentioned last week, which illustrates the dangerous mix of traffic at play along the patchwork of development already approved on 675 and golf course. It's dangerous. The velocity of traffic is unreal there. What's the rush? It's not good stewardship. It's not good governance to endorse this request. Their engineer has explained to you all of these things that they have to do to fit, to fit the 10 pounds into this, into this five-pound bag. I mean, I applaud it. I mean, it's an engineering feat. It's a marvel. But let me ask you something. Those things together would give any one of you pause if you lived next door, any one of you. If your family was potentially in danger, as mine is and was, I evacuated my neighbors with help from my other neighbors, you'd ask the same question. It's quite the leap of faith to say a for-profit organization has my best interest in mind. The county does because I am a taxpayer to this county. I believe they have my best interest in mind. If you want to know more about that current work, I'd be happy to share that with you. You're welcome to come to my home. You're welcome to many of my neighbors' homes that are probably buzzing my phone relentlessly at the moment, watching this. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Do you, I, I do know that it's only to review blockages and no improvement in the conveyance capacity. Okay, I just wanted to let you know that.
Understood. Any additional people for public comment? At this time, let's close public comment. Mr. Neal, I think you have something?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond to Commissioner Bowers' question, and at the proper time, I think Ed Vogler will do rebuttal and close.
Sure.
Just, I'd like to have three minutes on the matter of storage. We, Neil, have not done a very professional job today advocating for the benefits that we have chosen to invest in to improve this project, not only for the people who live there, but for the people downstream. As Brian Abely said, we can't improve anything for the people upstream, but here are four things that we're doing to improve the situation so that it'll be better for the people downstream than it is now. First, and most importantly, we are providing more storage than is required by code and by law, both offline and, both online and offline. We're experimenting with offline storage, which hasn't been done in Manatee County at all during my experience here, and we're going to find ways in freshwater conveyance systems that we can store more water that's coming from upstream, so we hold it so it's not released from downstream. Second, we'll be spending hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars to improve the conveyance through the system, both in natural systems and in culverts. The arrows that were pointed out to you, Mr. Bowers, will increase the rate of flow and also the efficiency of the stormwater system. Third, for a benefit of the people who live there and only for the people who live there, we're increasing the base flood elevation, but we'll have property protection swales throughout. I would say, beginning in the late 90s, Alicia, we became aware of what happened with the neighbors next to our properties, and we're good at protecting the neighbors. And I can assure you that the property protection swales around the outside will protect the neighbors as well as the people inside. Closing as to rate of flow, I might have to talk to you a little bit about developers. Of course, it's hard for the public to enter a public conveyancing system. It's almost impossible to get a permit to operate earthmoving equipment. Developers who have customers on the site, and this developer who, who has 25,000 homes in this town, is good at the idea of maintaining with community associations and doing things that public agencies don't like to do. Of course, we remove the snags. Of course, we take out the water cress. Of course, we solve minor problems in the flow, and of course, we increase the rate of flow. And you can see any major development, I'd say University Park would be the one that I would speak of most. Of the 25,000 homes, Mr. Chairman, we've never had water in a home because we maintain the conveyancing system. And people at Neal, after every major storm, get in the car and drive around to see how the water systems are functioning. So we know that this would be a better system for the people in the community, but more importantly, for the people downstream. And we've chosen to spend hundreds of thousands, maybe millions of dollars, A, to get the credibility of our company to be approved today, but more importantly, to lead the way for Manatee County in the future, to have developers focus on ways that can improve the environment, not only for the people they're building for, but for the people in the community. So I'm satisfied that we've done that. I hope we've convinced you, Mr. Chairman, and I hope we can convince the county commission. Thanks for this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed Vogler, for the record. A couple of just clarifying comments and then to speak about the actual stipulation. I wanted to say to the gentleman that we heard you, and it may be a surprise that a for-profit company might consider leadership positions beyond necessary ones. We were charged to do that because of our last hearing. And it's really more than this project. Neal wants to be a leader on this subject matter. We are going to bring other projects before you. We want to drag the other development community along with us as we partner with the county. This is more than this project. And I think it sparked from, from the hearing that we had and the, maybe we don't explain it well enough, maybe we don't advocate hard enough, but we're doing a really, really good thing here and a good job. And I say to you as decision-makers that we should be rewarded for that with an approval, and we ask you for that today. Ms. Greer, if you don't mind, I'd like to read the exact stipulation because if we created confusion, we did not intend to. And for my friend, the county attorney, I think she wants me to have this clear, and so I will read, and then we can decide whether it meets the goals. The finished floor elevations of all lots shall be two feet above the FEMA base flood elevation, period. Good, bad?
Well, I just know that Mr. Neal will remove the lots from the FEMA floodplain with a LOMAR after the fill is brought in. So technically, those lots will no longer be in a FEMA floodplain. So at the time of, of possibly design or building permit, they wouldn't, that, that would not necessarily be a true statement anymore.
Where, where does the county measure the one-foot elevation requirement from?
Either the 100-year that is developed in your stormwater ponds or based on the actual FEMA map.
Isn't that what we're saying that we'll do? It's our intention to do that. But go ahead, please.
If I could just, Brian Jackson, just help clarify. So at the time of the FSP, when we're going in to design the finished floor elevations, that's well before the LOMAR would actually be enacted.
Correct.
The LOMAR would be, happen after construction, after as built or completed. So at the time of FSP, those design elevations, which the building permits would, would have to adhere to, would be, would be set based on the lot in the, in the floodplain at that time of FSP.
Okay. Okay.
Can we have staff closing comments?
Thank you, Planning Commission. Again, James McDevitt with staff, have been sworn. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. The project went to Planning Commission before, and it was continued, not denied. So I want to make sure that's clear on the record. The stipulations provided for stormwater for the enhanced buffers, those are above the code requirements as it exists today, so they are providing an enhancement, and they are found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Applicant closing comments? Okay. Any discussion? Or motion?
I think, you know, similar sentiments to what we discussed back in February is that the timing on this can certainly seem difficult, but if we are operating within the purview of what the Planning Commission is, we are strictly looking at this to approve based on, does this meet LDC and does this meet comp plan? We asked a developer to work with us, to go above and beyond, and that is what the developer's goal has been. And I believe that that's what has been presented today. This may sound like a very unpopular opinion, but if we are wanting to hold our county and our developers and folks to a higher standard, we should choose the right person to do that. And I feel more comfortable choosing a developer who has worked with our community and with our government for decades to be the one to test that and be the leader in that versus an anonymous, unbeknownst to us person coming into our community saying they're going to do it when we don't know what their track record is within our own community. So I appreciate the work that you guys have done, and I do hope that this is the start in seeing the change within our development community and then leading the way. And I will be voting in favor of this project today.
Mr. Bauer?
Yeah. I'm virtually in agreement with everything Alyssa said today, with one exception. The comp plan allows for discretion in terms of timing and compatibility. The only thing that this, the public speaker didn't mention, which I'm pretty sure he would agree with, is the compatibility of the project, especially if it relates to the timing. So, from a timing aspect, I think, Pat, Mr. Neal, you always do a great job. I mean, that's not a, not an argument whatsoever. But getting this community and public on your side, I think it's, it's a difficult stretch. I think it's going to take some more time. But, you know, putting this project inside this area surrounded by effectively, you know, these, these, more or less, not farmers per se, but, you know, these, these are country folk, and that's the lifestyle that they've chosen, and they built their homes and lived in their homes and so forth. So, I think the compatibility aspect is not there yet. I think it will be. So, that's just clarifying my no vote today. And open to any questions by any other commissioners.
Any additional comments, or may we entertain a motion?
And we're happy with the stipulation for the vote?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it'd be the motion to recommend approval with the stipulation revised D7 as read by Mr. Vogel on the record.
Thank you. Now, we don't have the voting up yet on our computers.
Yeah, at the end it says.
Yep, there it is.
Revised, with a little correction spelling, revised D7.
We have a first by Ms. Kibble, a seconded by Ms. Gay. Please cast your votes. Motion passes forward to two. We already know what Mr. Bauer's stance is. Mr. Ziegler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I just think the, the issue on the compatibility with the, the changing of the, of the zoning from, from agricultural coastal to, to development is, is not the right time and for right now.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion with the commission?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
This is, for the moment, more directed at staff and maybe the attorney. I submitted documents to staff this week. I've been made aware that Development in District Three received a swift mud permit that effectively, amongst other things, effectively removed the wetland buffers proposed for most of the project. The existing 50-foot wetland buffer within the first phase was eliminated. The permits allowing for a Gabian wall, which is effectively just a seawall, prohibited along the Sarasota Bay. The wetlands were not avoided as required and no compliance with avoidance of wetland impact criteria. So, I'm aware that the Environmental Department has, I think, seen the permit. My request, and what I don't, don't know if we can do, if it's within our purview, is if I'm allowed to make a motion to instruct staff to prepare information and a potential recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to either initiate or adjoint to a, how should I put it, a petition against the permit. Does that make sense? Because I think there's a very small window of time where somebody can oppose the, the permit.
I think it's really beyond the purview of the Planning Commission to recommend the county get involved litigation on those type of matters. The county commission would have to make that motion. I'm not aware of the county.
I'm not suggesting we make a motion to litigate or not litigate. My motion was more of a, a presentation to the county commissioners to consider what they might want to do or not do. Does that make sense?
I, I think citizens have to bring that forward, and I believe the commissioners have received correspondence from citizens, at least one citizen on that point.
Okay.
That's more of a code violation than anything.
Well, we're a permitting agency. We normally don't get involved in challenging permits from other agencies. And we have to care what we say right now because we're affecting property rights. I have staff to stand down at this point. I think the county commissioner has to direct our office to get involved in any kind of type of litigation. It is litigation because the permit's been issued. They already have a swift mud permit, and they were requesting modification of it, and that's what was issued.
County attorney, can I provide some clarification between the swift mud and the county process?
Well, I'd rather not at this point. We're affecting property rights, and we could be sued over everything you say. So, I haven't talked to you about this. I have no quest legal service on this. I request you to stand down at this point.
Maybe we just do a workshop on it.
Well, I'd rather just keep it more general, not just this one project.
No problem there.
If you want.
Any other discussions?
Nope.
Close, Planning Commission. Thank you.